Brian Giezy.
Present.
Doug Houston.
Present.
Brian Mahan.
Mr. Wieschowski, present.
Cody Brabinski, present.
For those that are able, please stand in the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And virtue card reading. Mr. Wieschowski.
I've got that. Today's virtue goes along with something that's gonna happen, which is recognition. But this is helpfulness. Helpfulness is being of service to others, doing thoughtful things that make a difference in their lives. Offer your help without waiting to be asked. Ask for help when you need it. When we help each other, we get more done. We make our lives easier. You're practicing helpfulness when you notice when someone needs help, do a service without being asked, give people what they need, not always what they want, listen to someone who needs to talk, care for your own needs, ask for help when you need it. Affirmation. I'm helpful. I always look to be of service. I care for others and myself. I look for helpful ways to make a difference.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you. Board of Education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. And first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. It's great to see a full house here. It's not often that we get that, so I thank you for that. At this point, the opportunity for public comments. Anybody that may wish to make a public comment this evening? Quiet crowd, quiet crowd. Well, I think this is gonna be my most favorite part of the time here. The first item on our agenda is showcasing schools and student learning. We have an opportunity this evening to recognize somebody in an act that is pretty amazing. We have an individual with us, Mike Crutz. Mike, would you please acknowledge? It's good to see you, Mike. Mike Crutz joined Safeway after retiring from a career in law enforcement with the Adams County Sheriff's Department. Did you ever have to work with Brian, or was that... Thank you for your role in serving the public as a law enforcement. In his role as a bus driver, Mike continues to use his law enforcement training and experience on a daily basis. He has shown his ability to react in all situations, both normal and in a crisis. December seventeenth was a good example of this. Mike, along with Humke Elementary School counselor, Mr. Rod Winters, actually saved the life of a kindergarten student. Saved a life. Although the children are repeatedly told not to eat candy or suckers because they are a choking hazard, it still happens. On the afternoon of the seventeenth, a little girl had candy in her mouth on Mike's bus. When the bus hit the dip coming out of the Humke Circle, the candy got lodged in the little girl's throat. Mike immediately pulled over and called Rod Winters. Between the two of them, they managed to dislodge the candy. Thanks to the quick actions of Mike and Rod, a tragedy was averted. A life was saved. Mr. Crutz and Mr. Winters, you saved a life. The little girl's mother was crying when she met the bus and thanked Mike for what he had done for her daughter. We are so thankful for the quick thinking of these two gentlemen. Mike is a valued part of the Safeway team. He enjoys talking to and more importantly, listening to the students on his bus. Mike puts forth the extra effort each day to make a positively impact, a positively impact on his kids. Rod, Mr. Rod Winters. As the school counselor at Humke Elementary School, Rod Winters has a high degree of responsibility. He is committed to the needs of others and is consistently looking to support and serve other people. Rod is an excellent counselor because he understands that each person has a backstory and he chooses not to judge them for it. He is a person of high integrity who has always done the right thing regardless of the impact it might have on him. The love that Rod shows is consistent to all. We are grateful for Rod's hard work to instill character and virtues in all, especially the students of Nacusa. I am not surprised by the character Rod demonstrated when he stepped on the bus to help this kindergarten student. He sees every student as his student. He also sees every child as precious. We are grateful for Rod and his service to the families and students of Nacusa. Mr. Winters and Mr. Crutz, again, thank you. We all hear about the tragedies out there in this world, but to hear about these things that are saving a life will never be forgotten. Thank you. Would anybody else like to offer any words?
Hi, Lynn.
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you guys for doing this, for these two people, because it is really something amazing. These are situations you hope you never encounter and you never know how prepared anybody's gonna be, but thankfully, Mike and Rod were unbelievably prepared. And I know that family is just as grateful as we are, if not more so, but, boy, they really stepped up their game. So, thank you guys very, very much. And on behalf of Safeway, Mr. Crutz.
Ooh, look at that.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And I would like to just, you know, this is, you know, what Safeway does for our district and has done for our district for many years, I rode the bus back in whenever. I still remember my bus number and I still remember how bad I was. I think I was the first student they ever put a seatbelt on a bus door because I wouldn't sit down. Some people probably remember that. But, thank you, Safeway as a team, for serving us. And, you know, Mike, you did a very special thing, but I think you can speak for your team members that they all have that. Thank you again. We very much appreciate that. And, you know, you look at tonight, everybody's gotta be safe driving home. You bring our kids to school safe and happy, and we certainly appreciate that.
And thank you guys for being here.
Yep, you know, the support team.
Yeah, I was just gonna jump in real quick, and obviously, Rod and I have known each other for a long time. I'll just add one of the things that, we came over from the middle school to the Humke together a few years ago, and one of the things that Rod said right away, it's like, you know, somebody just needs to be out there on that corner every day doing that bus service. So, it's nothing I ever asked him to do. He just recognized the need, you know, make sure that kids are safe. And so, him just going out there every day and just making sure is just, well, there, it's appreciated. And obviously, it was there at the right time, again, in this moment, so I'm grateful for him.
And, you know, I'm so thankful to see everybody here. Would you mind just introducing yourselves and telling us what you do? Would you mind doing that?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Ann Smith, and I'm the safety director.
Dave Long, and I'm the mechanic at Nacusa.
I'm Wendy Long, and I'm a bus aide for special needs.
Chris Williams, mechanic at Kellner.
Cole Williams and his son.
I'm Jamie Williams and his wife.
Terry Coles, I'm a driver for Safeway for twenty-four years.
Terry Coles, I'm just a aide.
Josh.
Tracy Border, I'm all over.
I'm Nancy Zee, I drive for Safeway.
I'm Jerry Jacobs, I'm a Safeway driver.
I'm Mike, this is my wife Barb.
Barb, you have a special husband there. Very special.
And Mr. Winters.
Mr. Winters, introduce your family background. Yep.
Well, you know me, Mr. Winters, and this is my wife Kristen. She's a teacher in Port Edward. She teaches second grade there.
And I learned of it because I saw the student's mother at an event, and she did not know I was married to Mr. Winters. And I shared that, and she said, "He saved my daughter's life."
Wow, cool.
She's very gracious.
Yes. Oh, yeah, wow. On behalf of the school board from Nacusa and Nacusa administration, guys, thank you. Okay, the board meeting's over.
Have a good night, guys. Drive safe.
Be safe, gentlemen, ladies.
Throw down some sand on your way home.
Be very nervous. That was special.
Brianna, is that bus gonna go on Mr. Dawson?
We're gonna let everybody get settled before we... Hold on here. She gave us the update. We want on.
Nathan, did you have anything to share with CWC?
Nope.
Okay, yeah, we can go right on then.
When you're comfortable...
I'm just standing, yeah. I said no.
Part of our overarching results, the Nacusa Academy Business Venture, and if I could please request that when you're speaking, if you could go over by that area, right in that corner over there, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll get you on camera, yeah.
This camera will be...
You're advertising the...
I'm not a booker.
The virtue project.
And I guess I'd like to introduce Mr. Ness.
Sure.
That you're gonna be presenting.
I guess.
Well, Mr. Ness has a T-pack.
Well, let's get everybody over there and get some introductions.
Definitely.
Just pretend that the camera's not rolling.
Okay, it isn't really, no.
Well, I'm Bob Ness, and one of the teachers, Mrs. Leepack, who's also a teacher at the academy. We have Alejandra, we have Brianna, we have Boden.
Oh, and you're in the academy.
Then we have Chef Matt, who has also been helping us out. So, there are other kids that, there's a number of kids that are helping in this project, but these are the ones that decided they could make it today.
We had other ones that were coming, didn't make it. Two of them got in an accident.
Oh, really?
So, they're okay, though.
They're okay.
A little shook up, but...
Well, yeah, to say the least. So, anyways, I'll just start out, and the way we got this going is, I'm gonna give Mr. Whitmore some credit here because since he came on board, he really talked about virtues a lot to the academy students and how we should start our advisories with virtues and have the virtue cards by their computers and just to make it a positive environment in the academy. And so, we've done some paintings based on virtues. And since then, I've wanted to start a small business around virtues. And I've been thinking about this for like probably the last, what, four or five years, I'd say, and just didn't know how to go about it. I mean, we attempted many times, but it didn't work so well. And then, when we did our graduation last year and Matt did all the food for us for our graduation, I approached him and said, "Hey, Matt, would you like to work with us? You know, you have a food license and all this good stuff." And he says, "Yeah, this sounds great." So, we met a couple of times, and now this is where we're at, and trying to get this going. And Pat Wieschowski's been a big help. Also, Deanna Bray, bless her heart. I don't know, those secretaries never get enough praise. They work so hard. And she does so much for us that we're really, really blessed to have her helping us out. And, you know, you ask her to help and she's right there doing it. And like I said, we have a wonderful team.
And you worked with the chamber too, didn't you?
We did. They're so busy too. We'll probably get her back involved once we try to get this up and going because she may, if we have some glitches, which we're going to, see what she recommends and maybe even get Midstate because now they have that entrepreneurship, I think, program over there. Bring them maybe on board and figure out how we could tweak it and make it better. I don't know. It's an adventure.
You're starting a business venture that involves food. What else do we have here?
I know. Miranda wanted some of the chocolates today. I said, "Oh, no." Those are the samples to go around.
Are you gonna be making the candy?
Yes.
Can you tell us how that's gonna work and what you're...
Down in Matt's kitchen, down in the high school.
Okay.
Well, we have a kind of a thumbnail sketch that everyone's gonna kind of fill you in on here, okay?
Yep.
So, we got...
So, one of the bags of chocolates costs three eighty, and the retail price of one bag of chocolates is like a...
You wanna pass them around, Mr. Ness?
Which gives us a profit of two, twenty per bag, fifteen per bag. It's a single bag. Our goal is to sell one hundred and sixty bags of chocolates at six dollars, which would allow us to earn about one thousand eight dollars worth of sales. Once the initial investment dollars are met, the cost of making chocolates will drop to a dollar eighty-seven per bag of chocolates. The profit will be four dollars and thirteen cents per bag.
So, all sales will be run through the academy. General public may pick up their orders anytime throughout the day, seven AM to three PM, while students may pick up their orders three PM to four PM after school hour. The community has been very supportive of this project and has donated over seven hundred dollars towards this venture.
Chef Matt has been very helpful in developing the business. He's donated his time and expertise in the production of the chocolate. As well as Chef Matt, Deanna Bray has been instrumental in helping us with our startup. Almost all the students in the academy are involved in the production, sales, marketing, and delivery of the virtue chocolates.
Okay, how we started, first of all, is we ordered the molds for it. Then we bought chocolates, you know, in the bulk, and then we got bags that were ordered, which you saw as we passed them around. There are different styles of bags. Then, we had the virtues that are gonna be tagged on each bag made up. We have a total of twenty virtues, I believe, that we have, that we can put up. And a person can choose which ones they want because they're all individualized. And then, we can put that and kind of specialize their bag for their significant other or whoever it might be going to. The, then we went to Matt, said, "Let's start mixing and making some of this chocolate." So, we did, and then we had, the most fun was our taste test, which you will have shortly. And that, of course, everyone enjoyed that. So, we're putting the final touches on figuring out the dates. We have those pretty well set up. We have times for pickups for the chocolates. Everything's gonna be run through the academy. We will have online forms, but you cannot order online because we haven't figured out how to do that yet. So, you can print out the form and then send it to us, and then we can keep track of it. We're just afraid that, we don't have the expertise yet as far as online.
Maybe some other people do, but we don't.
We don't yet at this point.
We're old.
So, that's what we're trying, yeah, we're definitely old. But anyway, Valentine's Day is our first delivery date. That's what we're trying to work at. So, we will deliver the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth of February.
Well, that's when the pickups will be.
Or pickups will be. In other words, you have to pick it up at the academy. We're not gonna take it to your house, unfortunately.
No delivery, huh?
No delivery, yeah.
And it was interesting because when we made our first round of chocolates, you know, we tested them out and said, "Well, can we put some in the fridge? Would that be fine?" Well, we didn't cover them, and they got like a condensation on them, and they were like wet, like, ugh, like, I didn't like them. And then, with the dark chocolate, because it's sixty percent cocoa, we left those out and they got like that film, like white film on it, that the chocolate was old. So, we said, "Oh, we can't do that either." So, I mean, it's been like a testing type thing of what we need to do.
So, yeah, we'll pass these around. The dark chocolates, the dark, or little bit, I guess you would say bitter.
Well...
You know, it's not as sweet, okay? And then, the other one is a milk chocolate, so feel free to take one.
Yeah, and there's a couple in there that may be like a mix between a milk chocolate and a dark chocolate. There's a mixed one. So, we're gonna pass around the order forms so you can see those.
Order forms, please take one, okay? As we pass them around, remember just, you know, if you wanna give them to Diana, probably here, if you wanna collect them.
Yeah, she needs chocolate. She's getting way too thin. So does Lynn, Lynn needs chocolate.
So, can I ask, what did you guys learn through this process? What's been most striking?
I don't know, work with each other, even in the kitchen, it's kind of tight in there, so trying to work around big guys like Elliot and...
Behind them, too.
Trying to figure out how we're gonna get along when we're at that close in proximity. And teaching people kitchen etiquette, how to wash their hands after they touch anything on them, gloves, obviously. Michael's beard, gotta get him some beard nets.
Ah, interesting.
And plus, there's so much involved in this. You know, there's your sales, there's your marketing, there's, you know, everything about running a business, your accounting, all of that stuff. So, I mean, for practical reasons, this is perfect for them to learn. You know, running a business is a huge adventure and it's a lot of time.
So, can you talk about that in the academy as far as, you know, your profits and all that? How are you doing that?
What are you doing with the profits?
How are you teaching that, or how are the students involved in that process? Just the numbers when they're coming in and figuring out the profits and ordering and everything.
Well, we have a ledger that is started with our, all of the expenses that we've had so far, and then, plus the donations that we've had from the community members. We offset that, and then what we're going to do is, once the sales start coming in, we're gonna, we'll teach them a little bit about the accounting process, you know, how it balances and how we can make a profit or not make a profit if the sales aren't there.
Right.
So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a learning process. At this point, I've been basically doing that part of the accounting of it, but the students will learn that.
Which, that's how we're blessed too, because he's run a business before. I never have. This is just a pipe dream for me, so it's like, ooh, like, what am I really getting into?
I may have missed it, but what is the plan with any profits? Did you miss that?
That would go into student activity account.
We can also take profits and reinvest in the business.
Right.
Then we can expand us a little farther, maybe start doing filled chocolates, maybe a whole different candy altogether. Farther we go along with it, expand our sales.
And for now, we're starting out small. We're gonna do Valentine's Day, we'll do Easter. Starting up next year, we'll do Halloween, we'll do Christmas. We'll do one a quarter because basically, I think that's about all we can handle with everything else that has to be done.
One of the things that I was involved in that was kind of cool was I took Miguel, who was in the car accident.
No, not Miguel, Marshall.
Oh, Marshall. Oh, I thought Miguel, oh, Elliot was with him.
Yes.
Okay, but anyways, Miguel's not here. I took Miguel and Boden to the bank and actually went through the process of going through a business loan with their loan officers. And it was pretty cool, wasn't it? Learning experience. Definitely, yeah. But it was pretty cool. They showed, they told us how to do this and, you know, it was neat.
And many of those jobs that, you know, are incorporated in this business, kids will overlap because they'll have to. In case somebody's not there, everybody's gonna need to know so somebody else can take over. So, they'll be doing spreadsheets, databases of all the orders that come in. Yeah, so it's a huge learning adventure. You know, pray for us.
I really like the packaging. Were you guys, where'd you get that logo that's on the bag?
Oh, Miguel made that.
Tell us about that.
Not Boden. Boden made the order form.
Order form.
Boden made the order form.
Boden, anything else you wanna share? We haven't really heard.
I really like this logo of the tree. I do, yeah. That's... With the V-C in it.
Oh, no, Leepack and Ness, they kind of came up with it. It's Miguel that kind of put it all together for the whole...
Yeah, 'cause he knows the computer guru, so we did. Yeah, we just come up with ideas and say, "Hey, do this." See what you can come up with.
I really liked the nutrition label. Who came up with those?
Um, that was also Miguel, which was in here. Which, you know, the nutrition thing is on the back because you have to have that.
They're doing it the way we're supposed to.
You know, it's, like I said, it's just an adventure, and we'll see where it goes.
These are the different virtues that we decided on, where people can pick out what they want, and we'll have them all separated, and then we'll tie them on with a ribbon, and then we use the sticker with our logo on it, and that's how we present it. So, you can pick really one of twenty different virtues that we, that the kids...
So, for ordering for Valentine's Day, the deadline's February sixth. And with the eighth being an end service day, we've asked the kids that wanna come in to make all the orders to come in on that day so we can start. So, they're willing to do that. You know, most kids will go, "Woo-hoo, day off." Well, I said, "No, it's not. We have to work."
We'll be in the kitchen making chocolates and getting the packaging ready and...
I really gotta give you a shout, Matt, for supporting us and teaching these students the skills.
Yeah, anytime we get any students in the kitchen, it's always a good time and it's something they'll use the rest of their life. Even if, not in a business, you're always gonna eat, so the more time you're gonna gamble food and see the beginning, end process, the better.
You know, when I think about Elliot going down there and him really like, "Oh, I gotta stir this. Okay, now I'm gonna, I'm doing this." I mean, he's so into this. So, that might be a field he wants to go into. I don't know. You know, the food industry. So, you know, there's all kinds of perks as far as what these kids can learn.
Hey, if you keep bringing treats, gosh.
We can do that.
Pretty happy.
We have a lot of order forms.
Okay, I got an order form right here.
I said, "It'll be interesting the farther we take this, you know, maybe near year from now, we're doing filled chocolates, so maybe we'll get in the venture of doing flavored white chocolate, stuff like that." I mean, so we'll get out there.
Mr. Whitmore stopped in the other day and saw what we were doing, and he says, "Well, on the back here, is there a way you could put something on the back about that when you're eating one, you're building on this virtue?" We're building on this virtue. Maybe some calories too, but we're building on this virtue.
I just had a joyful, joyfulness.
See, there you go. But, put on their building character or something. So, I looked into maybe getting a stamp, or we could just stamp it on the back, and that would make it easier.
Well, thank you guys for sharing.
And I wanna say, building a character, just for you guys being here tonight to speak to us about this project means a great deal.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come. I know it was short notice, and I appreciate that.
We moved you up.
I know, and I thank you for that. I thank you. We all thank you.
I got my order all filled out. I just need the money, so I'll stop momentarily.
All right, be safe, guys, when you're out there. But, as students, I can't say how much I appreciate your...
So, for community members that want a virtue, where do they get the, because this will be televised before the fourteenth?
Community members, I believe, will be able to see the order form online.
They had to fill it out and then drop it off at the academy.
Online, we can leave these here with you if you like.
They could go to the front office or they can just come to the academy. They could go to the front office or they can just come to the academy.
Okay.
You want us to leave some with us?
Sure. Cause Deanna is the one that's been helping us an awful lot with this, so she'll know.
Where is it online? Is it on the, the academy website, academy?
Well, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, why don't we just think about the paper, yeah, if people wanna order them, they gotta pick up the paper, that's very good.
Yeah, and we'll leave some here and so you'll have them and then we'll have them at the academy or in the high school too.
And Brianna's gonna make some flyers hopefully and so we can put them in and send them over to the principals and have them put it in the schools and...
No, I think we'll have to look for an update after your, your Valentine's Day event and just, yeah, keep it up, guys, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to...
Take the rest of the, the crew, the candy makers.
Somebody eat these chocolates, can you?
Really, Brianna?
You want one?
No, son's taking them home.
That's right.
Nathan, Nathan's had two, so.
I've already had two.
Hey, Nathan, maybe we'll have to make like an apple crisp one or something like that, you know.
Our research and development, Ann, I'm here for you. All right.
Appreciate it, guys.
Yeah, dry still. Lots of space between you two.
Yeah. Well, as we move forward here, um, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Grill, Director of Student Services. Do you have anything that you'd like to discuss this evening?
Um, I'm actually gonna speak more when we get to the open enrollment availability, so I'll...
Very, very good. And Ms. Knight, the same thing?
Well, I was wondering what you wanted to do, because I was gonna talk about going to a little depth, to a little bit more depth on the treasures report and the PMA models, if you'd like. I can wait till then, till the...
Why don't we do that when we do the other part?
Perfect, okay, good, yeah, sounds good.
And I would like to now introduce, um, let me get this right, Ms. Leepair. First name? Yeah, I'm gonna miss the first name.
Eleanor.
Ms. Eleanor Leepair, thank you for your, for being here this evening. And you are, you are the student representative?
Yep, I'm taking this place.
What, is there anything you wanna share with us this evening?
Um, well, we just did a winter spirit week and we're gonna, we're, we're working on one for Valentine's Day week right now. And then also student council is getting ready to launch a new student group that's about creating a better environment for students to be comfortable with growing and hopefully that will also take place into leading into the middle school to prepare them to come to the high school.
Fantastic. And you're, you're on the school board, I mean, uh...
Student council.
Student council. And how long have you been on the student council?
Um, since sixth grade.
Since sixth grade, you've got some experience. So, winter spirit week. What kind of activities did you do for winter spirit week?
Um, we mostly did just dress up days and then we did a fun day the day before we went on winter break. Um, yeah, so that's really all that we did that week.
It hasn't felt like real winter yet, but, you know.
I mean, tonight it does, but yeah.
And the next thing, Valentine's Day, you said?
Yeah, we're doing a Valentine's Day, um, trying to make a volleyball tournament and maybe, we had a meeting today talking about doing like, um, a bag, like the bag tournament. And then doing a scavenger hunt through the passing periods, um, throughout the day, yeah, on a Friday.
And that's in conjunction with, for everyone, uh, anyone watching on TV too, on February fifteenth, we have, it's called Paddy House. So it will be both boys' basketball and girls' basketball at home that night. So it's a great chance to come out and get to see a girls' game and a boys' game, all in the same place, all in the same night, so.
Cool.
Chili for charity is on the sixteenth, too, then.
Ooh, chili for charity. On the sixteenth and the hours for chili for charity, do you know?
I believe it's eleven to twelve, uh, to two.
Eleven to two and that's a function that's carried on by the...
National Honor Society.
National Honor Society. And the proceeds of the chili.
I think we decided this year to give it to Jeremiah's Crossing.
Fantastic. The chili is wonderful, are there, are there gonna be bowls and other items?
There are gonna be bowls, yeah.
Those are very neat, those bowls are made by the art classes. I have four of them now, I need to add more to my collection. Um, thank you very much. Any other questions, any board members? Eleanor, thank you for your time this evening and, and take, take what you hear back to the student council. So, the next part on the agenda is the board district administrator relations and an item that's on the calendar was monitoring district administrators' performance. Our current policy, BSR five E, calls for annual evaluation of the district administrator. The, the full formal evaluation is to be completed by June fifteenth of this year. And we do that so that it can encompass the entire, uh, school year, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. For January on the calendar, it's kind of a checkup for us to review where we are with regards to the operational expectations and results policies that have been reviewed to date. Each board member was provided with a copy of the strengths and weaknesses as identified. This is a item that we probably need to revise the policy a little bit for this, for this January review, but, each board member was provided a summation. These indicate the strengths and weaknesses of each. This is a six-month checkup that we need to incorporate into the policy itself. The formal evaluation and summative narrative will be provided by June fifteenth of this year. This will allow us to evaluate all of the items that are on the policy governance calendar for the current school year. Terry, as the lead learner and visionary for the district, has been working diligently to move our district into serving students in a twenty-first century learning environment. Change is not easy. We have come a long way and the work that has been done is paying dividends. As the district, as the district administrator, there is always a target on your back. You are to be congratulated on your steadfastness, steadfastness in promoting and supporting a model that in many ways exceeds our counterparts. The educational practices that we are undertaking are leading edge and, you know, we truly believe will enable our students to, to readily transfer. As always, we can always improve and always, we need to be mindful of our stakeholders' expectations. Thank you, Terry, and we look forward to continuing, to continuing the work for the rest of this school year and beyond. So thank you for your service and this six-month checkup you passed. We, we do appreciate it.
Get back to work, yeah.
Now you gotta get back to work, thank you, Terry, for that, for that, for what you do for us. At this time, we are going to move into the financial aspect. Ms. Knight, the floor is yours to cover those items. I need to mention one other thing. Congruent or what do you say when you're doing it together?
Well, at the same time.
We did it at the same time. When we did the review with Terry, um, we, we did, we did the administrative, we approved the administrative contracts, um, for the administrators of the Nicholas School District. So that, that item has been addressed, Terry's as well as the others.
For, for the next two years.
For the next two years, so. Lynn, it's yours.
All right, so every year at this time, I bring the audit report to the board for approval. You have a memo in your board packet. I distributed the financial report to each of the board members back in December. I'm sure you read it cover to cover and probably have a lot of questions. So I can give you just a summary of what happened at the, at the audit. The two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year ended on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen and the auditors arrived in July. They spend about a week in our district and they go through, um, a sampling of entries, of journal entries, of cash receipts, disbursements, they look at payroll, internal controls, just about everything under the sun when it comes to an audit. They also actually test some major programs. For example, we have state programs and we have federal programs. For the federal program this year, they tested the child nutrition cluster, which is our school nutrition program. And for the state programs, they tested our generalized equalization aid, our SAGE and our per pupil adjustment aid. And all of those programs are basically looked at pretty in depthly when they tested as a major program. And I'm happy to report that there were no findings in any of those programs. So that's always a you rah rah for, for us. So what happened in seventeen, eighteen? Our, our operating funds, our general fund is Fund Ten and Fund Twenty Seven, which is the special education fund. Those are our operating funds. And when we talk about how we did as a district, those are the two funds that we specifically look at. At the end of the year, the special education fund is required to have a zero balance. So if they end up where expenses are exceeding their revenues, DPI requires that we do a transfer from the general fund to the special education fund to be, basically balance it out. So when we looked at the general fund, Fund Ten, um, our expenses exceeded our revenues by two hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars. And if you can remember back in October, when we passed this year's budget, we are also projecting about a three hundred thousand dollar deficit for eighteen nineteen. Um, the community service fund is a separate levy, plus two. And we actually put money into the, the, the community service fund, which is Fund Eighty, to the, to about thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, that's where the police liaison is paid out of, that's where the daycare is paid out of. So, and, you know, there's the community outreach coordinator over there that's paid out of that as well. So we do try and utilize those funds in the year that we levy them. Unfortunately, last year, we, we, we put money into that fund balance. So the fund balance in the general fund represents about twenty-two percent of operating expenditures. Now, there's not a steadfast rule on what that percentage should be because each school district is funded at a different level, whereas we're two-thirds funded by the taxpayers. Another district may be two-thirds funded by the state. So the timing of those payments really affects, um, this, uh, what your percentage of fund balance should be. In order to stop our short-term borrowing, I am estimating that our fund balance would need to exceed five million dollars because we are so heavily reliant on the taxpayers. The auditors provided us with the unqualified opinion, which means a clean opinion. And I am recommending that the school board approve the seventeen, eighteen fiscal audit report. After the motion, I do have a comment to make in addition for the auditors.
Very good. At this time, I, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the financial audit as presented. So, second. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We, we had a partner, we, we are with Whitley currently and our partner in charge has retired last year. So he was not part of the audit team this year. It was disappointing that, that we did not have a partner in charge that showed up at our district and, um, it was, uh, I did not, I did not receive the services that I expected. And I was a little disappointed in some of the comments that the partner made without even stepping foot in our district. And it was made on the day the report was due to the Department of Public Instruction. So I was very disheartened, we had a conversation and I, he knew I was very unhappy with what the service he provided and the comments that he made. And it, he did admit that we did not get the service that we paid for. And I was glad he admitted it, but I am still very disappointed in the service that we provided for the price that we're paying. So I, I feel that now is the time to go out for bid for our auditors again, just to see what type of prices we can get, maybe we can lower our prices a little bit. And it's always nice to have some fresh eyes look at our financial picture as well. I completed a, or I issued a survey to my colleagues and most of my colleagues are either going with Shank or they're going with Hawkins Ash Baptist. So they, those two firms will absolutely get a request for proposal from us. I, I'm sure there are other auditors that I'll be researching, but I just wanted to let you know that I will be doing that probably within the next month.
Is there a specified contract year with regards to audit services?
Typically, um, you issue a, they issue a contract for three years and then it's, on an annual basis, yearly after that. We're on the yearly after the three-year contract. So I do believe that Whitley is expecting that we're leaving, based on my conversations.
Very good.
I'll keep you posted.
Thanks, update and, and congratulations on a good audit again.
Congratulations, us, all of us, we are doing it.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Lynn, and, uh, at this point, Mr. Brian Grill.
So, um, as part of your board packet, I gave you our open enrollment projections. So every January prior to open enrollment season starting, we have to decide whether or not the school board would like to place caps on, for our students with disabilities. Two years ago, we did this for the first time, just because, as we know with our financial situation and trying to keep case management numbers to a manageable amount for our special education teachers, we decided to put caps on our special education enrollments. So in front of you, what you have is the projected of where we have open seats across the district and where we do have some availability to take on new students. I will say, right now, we are capped in quite a few areas. The good thing though, as I look and look at our open enrollments in versus open enrollments out, which is the very last page, this is the last year where our open enrollment outs outnumber our open enroll ins. Because the ones that are continuing to be open enrolled out are students who have been, for a number of years, open enrolled out. And some of those are hitting their senior years in high school. So next year, I'm projected to have more students open enrolled into our district than out. So that's exciting news, but that's also explaining why we are capped in quite a few areas, so. But what would happen here if you decide to place caps on our students with disabilities? I keep track of this number and as students move into our district and then as they apply for open enrollment, Lynn and I have a process when she receives an open enrollment request. I request a copy of the individualized education plan and determine, because it's not number of students necessarily that I look at, I look at the units available. And I have to calculate the services that they receive to say, do I have enough units available for that student to attend here? So it's not just a strict number of students, I look at each kid individually and calculate their units.
Our capacity to what we can.
Exactly. Because if, and just so you know, if you decide to place caps, this is why I'd be working the numbers in front of you. That's why I would have to work with till this time in January. If you decide not, any open enrollment suit that applies, we must take on and we may not have the budget to add on another special education teacher, other resources available.
Is this the second year or third year that we've done this?
I want to say second or third, I can't remember off the second, thank you.
Okay, okay. So a difficult situation, but there are capacity issues and we need to be, you know, we need to be aware of that.
And I would say with the last year, we've, we've had several instances where we've turned people away, right?
Yes, we have.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Do you have any questions or?
I don't. Okay.
And how they're calculated, just so you know, there's a DPI model that I have to follow to calculate units and that's where all those numbers came from.
And one of the important things too is the reimbursement rate that DPI is holding us to in regards to special education students. I think we're only allowed $12,000 now.
Yeah.
And it used to be you got to recoup some of your, all of your expenses.
Correct.
And now you don't. So it's $1,000 bucks and that's a.
Because before, what I could do, say, for example, if there's a student with disabilities that had physical therapy, OTV, all these additional costs, I would, there would be the open enrollment and then I'd calculate all these other charges as well. And then like Lynn said, we get full reimbursement. But now all we get is $12,000. Any of those additional costs, those are costs that are coming out of the district's pocket, so.
So you could be bringing somebody in that costs $60,000 and you only get 12.
Correct. So caps do make sense.
Very good. At this time, I would like to call for a motion to place caps on special education enrollment as presented, as well as to place caps on the inclusive virtual wise academy of not to exceed 150 virtual students total and to not set caps on rigor education students for the open enrollment space avail, space availability for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I'll move down. Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Educational options, informational only.
Yeah, so this is something that the law requires. We need to indict and get this posted in the newspaper. We have to state our educational options that are available to students in our boundaries. We have to release information on our accountability reports and then also mention the special needs scholarship program. So it's information only and this is something that's posted on the website as well.
Very good.
Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Just with the special needs scholarship program, just so you know, that's not something often utilized in our area. Because what it is for our families of students with disabilities, if they would like to look into a private school setting or things of that and get tuition reimbursement from our district. One, the private schools they have to look to have to be approved as a private entity that can take students with disabilities and have services. And the closest one in our area is Al Wassa. But first, two, they have to apply for open enrollment and be denied due to caps to at least three other districts before they qualify for this tuition reimbursement. So we let parent, we have to legally let parents know of the program. But I'll say in our area, it's very, it's not utilized due to the, because the travel and things of that nature. So it's usually more utilized in areas, larger populations, more private schools who are participating in the program.
Thank you.
And they have to provide their own transportation, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Very good. CWSA contract. This tonight, I believe, we want to discuss some of the items related to the contract. The Governance Council of CWSA has done a great deal of work with regards to reviewing the contract, updating the contract to reflect the current practices. They've also noted, there's, there's one big change in that they're looking at serving grades four through eight. We initially thought that this may be a possible typo, but it wasn't intentional. And this is, this is something that's important to, to, to us as there might be some opportunities. But there's nobody here from, from CWSA, but.
Nathan's been.
Nathan, yeah, I'm sorry. Nathan's here.
True.
Did you want to talk about that?
And, and that is a piece that, and I can't speak entirely for theirs as we're having, we would review those of various pieces along there. And the four through eight was a piece that was, that's, that's close to what was there in the past contract. And that sort of rolled forward in many ways. That does not mean that there are, now remember that this contract is approved in five year increments. And that, and of those things, there's not plans to be able to move to expand by a year going into the next school year or those areas. I believe that they put that into preserve flexibility as those comes over these areas because rather than if they do just be able to have, over the course of the last five years, it went from grades four through eight to six through eight. And that change was made. Because they had prior approval for that grade range, they didn't need to come for, change the contract. As removing for, for this other one, there are currently not any plans to expand those, but given that this goes over a five year period, that allows the flexibility within that area.
And that's one of the issues as well that we need to address is the length of the contract. And again, I think discussions will need to occur over the next month for approval of this contract. Needs to be cited by Lynn Terry.
Well, the contract can only be for five years, so, so July 1st, it would be the start of the new contract.
July 1st, yeah. But at this point, we are looking at possibly doing just a one year contract. And this is, this is partly in response to some of our budgetary concerns. And looking at what services we may be able to continue to offer. It's a very difficult decision. We want, CWSA and STEM have, have performed admirably and they provide, they provide a, a way of learning that fits very well for some students and they have accomplished great things. But we need to look at the budget considerations. I have had the opportunity to speak with, with a number of the Governance Council members on this subject. We may indeed be looking to have to, you know, with our, with our budget being in the red, gentlemen, and Lynn knows this very well. What we're able to offer is hard to be able to save from year to year based upon our funding. Am I correct?
So essentially, a one year contract versus a five gives the district some flexibility.
Correct.
Should they need that, right?
Correct.
The other piece that I'd add too is, in having that conversation for eight, and I certainly had a conversation with some of the other council members is, right now, our fifth grade, our, our third grade, fourth grade numbers are high. And actually, this year, we've added an intern at fourth grade to support the, the numbers there. So we've got a, an intern that we work with, UWC was pointing on. So I'm thinking in my head, and certainly we've had some conversations about this, but we got to work on it and work with the council on it and, and Alexander Middle School. If those numbers, if they were to include fourth and fifth grade, that would give us a greater flexibility as a school. And that was one of the intentions as we brought CWSA online, is we always had just beyond enough kids for three sections. So they've always been pretty good sized classes up there. So if there was some flexibility in those years where we had fourth and fifth grade served by CWSA that helped bring down the numbers at Alexander Middle School. So it's just something that we need to be thinking about and talking about and having conversations with CWSA on, because they've moved away from it for a reason.
And we need, we need to honor the Governance Council and their, their, their position as an instrumentality of the district. And, 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 you know, they have to have some control over what they feel is appropriate for their, for their, for their, for their needs. So I think over the next month, we need to have those conversations with the Governance Council. You know, when it comes to these budgetary issues, you know, we, we may be one of those districts as we've saw in this last, last election cycle with, with referendums to be able to provide needed services. Services such as this may be on the table for that. And that's a very difficult thing to say. But as we as a district have those numbers in the red, we have to be, you know, it's something that we as a board need to actively work on, work with our stakeholders, work with our, 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 our needs analysis and, and, you know, there's, you know, Lynn and administration have done great work looking at the numbers. So I don't know, Terry, is there anything else, like?
I guess Nathan, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Well, just as a note is that, again, as we're, as we're working to be, as with any area, the CWSA has with its enrollment, with the grades it's been able to take, expanding, changing from one year to the next. Really, the plan is not to necessarily use it in accordion fashion. Chances to double down on a model and help them get good at it. You know, just one of the other models that we've been exploring involves having the CWSA teachers pair with our fifth grade teachers. And particularly in the teaching of science to create some additional STEM opportunities for AMS students. And to be able to enrich what's happening in the day school. Over on AMS is a win-win for both because that's not only an opportunity to get a more vibrant science curriculum and hands-on those type of areas, but it also introduces the students to be able to what that model would look like as the year is they're moving into CWSA. So as, as it is right now, to be able to say, CWSA, again, I need to present it as it is not in competition with AMS. It is an alternate delivery model. And, but to be able to have and understand what that alternate delivery model looks like and what that can entail, especially a fifth grader needs to be in position to be able to have a hands-on choice rather than just something they get presented to them on paper. And so as we're looking, as we're talking about relieving pressure and being able to help support those other grades as they're coming through there, one of the models we're exploring is being able to help our, have both schools work more hand in hand as opposed to just in silos as we have more to a degree. And so there's multiple ways to be looking on it and that's probably a conversation, as, as we're holding these conversations, understand that we're trying to push out in different ways too, to be able to help support all students in the district, not just, not just one side or the other.
Very good, yeah. And, you know, I think again, we need to honor the work that the Governance Council has done. The teachers within, within CWSA and the opportunities that those students have been afforded. You know, I think there's, you know, we were here when nothing started and it's, it's fantastic to see, you know, John, you had a big, big part of that development. And, you know, that's something that we value as a district. Again, like you say, Mr. Black, has not changed for other, you know, ways for students to learn and students that might learn better in that taught based department, so.
So could I suggest that perhaps we get a couple of board members at an upcoming council meeting? We can chew on some of these topics? Because the other topic too that we should be talking about is, right now, there's 26 students there. We will have some, perhaps some eighth grade kids leaving. So how can we support in making sure that we get numbers there next year that, you know, merit both staff members that are currently serving? Or, you know, how do we respond? So maybe we can get on there. When do they meet?
Generally, they're meeting on, they meet on the month, on generally the third Mondays. We didn't, we didn't hold a meeting yesterday, but.
So we'd be looking at the Monday preceding our next.
But there's, there's, when we're talking about more than just what are next steps of it, there's going to need to be some coordination with that. So let's just dig a little bit deeper and then.
Yeah, maybe they'll hold a special meeting.
I would, I would, I would offer to be present. I've, I've worked with them pretty closely.
It's third Monday at camp.
Well, if we do an improv day, maybe we'll grab.
We'll, we'll sort that out as we get a bit closer.
Very good. Just third, third, the third Monday is the only bad one and that's what they normally do.
Well, and again, as I'm not a board member, I can't speak for the whole board. As working here, we'll just need to get a little more details as we come.
Yep. Okay, I think we can move on. Anything, Mr. Black, that I missed, anything?
No.
And, and certainly board members, if you have questions, you know, as you look at it more, please, please send them our way and we'll work with the council on that.
Yep. Okay, the next thing we have, policy governance. Operational expectation number 11 instructional program. This is a, this is a very, very.
In-depth.
In-depth. Operational expectation. We met last week Thursday and discussed this. I would like to thank Mr. Black for the time that you spent with us going over, over it. Mr. Johnson, I have some comments I'd like to just read and, and board members. This is kind of a summation of our, of our discussion. I would ask that, you know, if there's anything you'd like to add or, or improve. The instructional program as presented in 011 is very robust. It encompasses definitive practices and standards based instructional and learning methodologies, methodologies from pre-K to K to all. Much work has been done with regards to ELA and mathematics. The transition to the workshop model and implementation of college preparatory math for grade six through 10 has involved much work and as outlined within this document, has support for the continuation and strengthening of practices within these areas. There's ongoing work with regards to evaluating how we assess comprehension, any curriculum that aligns with the Common Core standards. The work that is being done with regards to AP courses as well as dual credit courses continues to grow and provide more opportunities for our students. It also provides for diverse learning opportunities to meet individual student needs. Examples include CWSA as well as virtual learning. These are but a few of the practices and strategies outlined within this operational expectation. The addition of in-house instructional coaching is a strength and has been well received. And there is still support for other instructional coaching opportunities. Adequate resources are available at this time. However, the continuation of the supports is something that will be a challenge in funding from a budget standpoint. Resources that are needed to further the opportunities available to our students are becoming very difficult to support financially. Administration, teachers and support staff are to be congratulated not only in the body of work that has been completed, but the ongoing work and support needed to prepare our students for their future beyond our walls. It's a, it's a very in-depth document and encompasses more than we could discuss in three or four nights of work here. But I, I think as a board, we can say, based upon the policies and what's presented in here, that we have a, a system that is, is designed for the 21st century learner and provides for the supports of students of all needs. Any, any concerns, comments, questions about the summation of our discussion from last week Thursday? It seems to be a very short, and Nathan, was I accurate in that?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
I was not accurate?
No, no. I said, thank you, it was.
Oh, I thought you said I was not accurate.
Right, no, 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 no.
No, no, you're not, very good. It's a, it's a very brief statement on a very broad subject, and that's, that is difficult to do because of.
You did, I think you did a really nice job selling it out.
Yeah. To, you know, I would encourage anybody, anybody that is interested in looking at the depth and the research and this, and the, and the, the body of work that is, is, is there. I would encourage anybody to look at this document, and it's just fascinating from the start to the finish, as to the, to the rigor and to the, to the, to the tenacity and just what we're doing to do the best that we can for our students.
And I think it really matches up well with what we talked about last month too. So, I mean, it just shows, kind of gives a picture of what's happening across the district. And everybody's working hard to make that happen, so.
And I just want, some of these programs are just under infancy. They're just getting going. When, I, I firmly believe that when they get rolling, it's gonna be pretty good, it's gonna be awesome.
The dividends shall come from the work that's being invested. And I guess, you know, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Spring, any comments, or did I miss anything?
No.
And we were looking at that.
No, we're good.
And again, the guys all deserve a great deal of thanks and appreciation for what has gone into this. And that's one, one of the things I tried to get in, in here was that, you know, that in-house instructional coaching. You know, as we develop teachers and, and, and other support staff within the district that are working with peers, those kind of teams are kind of self-evolving. And they grow, and they develop, they develop, they develop traction and just go forward. So we've gotta continue to do that. Thank you, guys. We didn't find any non-conformances in the absence of any other discussion. I would like to call for a motion to approve OE11 Instructional Program as presented.
I'll make that motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. GP9 Board Member Covenant. This one is relatively straightforward. Do you want to just read what the?
I'd be happy to. To build, so Board Member Covenants is to build and maintain productive, effective relationships. Board members shall maintain communication and interaction that builds upon mutual respect and trust, embodies civility, and respects decisions made by the full board. This process will be monitored annually. So accordingly, members will focus on issues, not people or personalities, respect decisions of the full board, exercise honesty in all communications, make every reasonable effort to protect and promote the integrity and positive image of the district, one another, and the district administrator and staff. Employ the following format to submit items they wish to have the board deliberate, deliberate. Define the problem, propose a solution, a possible solution, and propose possible board action.
Thank you, Terry. The board finds us to be itself in compliance with policy GP9. This board has embodied the intent of the covenants outlined above. Although we may not always agree and feel, although we not, we may not always agree, we feel comfortable discussing difficult items. We honor the positions and viewpoints that each of us may have. And in bringing those items to the table, it enables us to make and agree on decisions that embody effective board member stewardship. So we have, we've done a good job as a board in, in honoring the covenant, so.
And this, this policy, there was quite a bit of discussion Thursday night too, so that was good, I appreciate that. And Cody, thanks for the email follow-up.
So.
I'd like to make a motion that the board finds itself in compliance with policy GP-9 Board Members Covenant.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Consent Agenda. Ms. Knight, you wanted to speak?
I did. I know that you approved Beth's retirement last month, but I was ill. And I just wanted to say a few words about Beth. I hired Beth back in July of 2011, and she's been here for seven and a half years. She took that job and she absolutely made it her own. She is one of those individuals that can think outside the box. She can look at a situation and think of it so logically. When I needed somebody to bounce an idea off of that wouldn't get emotionally involved, Beth would be my person to go to. She has been such a great addition to the McCusus School District. She, she really honed in on procedures. Everybody, everybody in this district knows what is expected of them in regards to purchasing. So she's implemented a lot of new procedures. We have a lot of automated procedures because of Beth. So she is gonna be missed so much. And I'm just so happy that we had the opportunity work, to work with her, because I think we're all better because of Beth. So I, I'm just, I'm so sad to see her go, but I'm so happy that she got, she's getting to do what she really wants.
She's going to do something she wants.
Yep, so that's.
Thank you, everybody.
Because that, you laid it out exactly how it's meant. We're gonna miss her.
Anything in regard to John's agenda?
Yeah, well, I'm anticipating the next one. I just want, also want to take a moment to honor Jane Centaur in her service to the district over the last several years, and her role in helping kids learn music and get excited about music. And we just want to wish her well in retirement, and again, just appreciate who she is and what she brought to the district and, and her skills, so thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
I had several fifth graders I was talking with right afterwards, they learned the news. They're like, she's the only teacher they've known. In that sense, they were in music over that area, and they were just, again, just very appreciative of the work that she's done, very much. And when you're missed by your students, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for adding that, that's big.
And I, do you want me to read donations?
Yeah, you know, Cody's been doing that for us, but I, I want, you want to do it? Do you want to do it, or are you?
I'll, I'll take it.
Are you gonna jump up and down a little bit? We gotta, we gotta celebrate something.
We got donations here. The First Congressional Church from Rapids donated $2,223 to be used towards our outstanding lunch balances, so thank you.
How much?
$2,223.
How much?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
And we also have some great donors here for Backpack for Kids, $180 for Sacred Heart Collections, $130 from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, $100 from the Rollmakers HCE, and $150 from the NHS, NHS class of 1958, so thank you, guys.
Wow, that's fantastic. That's cool, Ben.
Any other comments?
Beth, we've got some hirings, employment?
Just. We, I guess, you know, yes. Just, we just would recommend that the individuals listed be hired, and we're grateful to have those people join our team. Holly Olson and Jennifer Pobermacher, and I'm sure.
Yeah, Becky, we posted Beth's position, and now Becky is, was hired, and she's training with Beth until the end of January. So she's gonna be up to speed. We're really happy to have her on board.
Very good.
As a note, as the first-grade teacher, Holly Olson, she's been serving as our intern in fourth grade for the past half year. And it is the, it's going, she was, she will be very much missed. She's really a phenomenal teacher, and we're grateful to be able to keep her in the district long-term.
Fantastic. And just to add one more thing, Jennifer's coming to us from Port Edwards, who, she's been serving over there in a part-time capacity, music, so we're lucky to get her here.
Fantastic, fantastic. At this time, I would call for a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Future meetings, agenda items. Board Workshop, February 14th. That's not right, is it?
Valentine's Day.
Board Workshop.
That's not, that's the 29th, there's no Terry.
We have done a Valentine's Day workshop.
You can do it if you want, but I ain't gonna be here.
Board Workshop is the 28th.
It is the 14th. Well, we have one the 29th as well, but next month, the Thursday before the Tuesday.
Oh, you're right, you're right, that's our regular Thursday meeting.
Good for him.
Not anymore, is it?
We're not having it.
Propose making it a Wednesday meeting?
Well, what about doing a, I'm gonna be gone that week on vacation. I did talk to Brian, it's discipline next month.
We got a big one, so we gotta have a meeting on.
So we could do the Monday night before.
Monday, the night before the meeting?
Yeah, the 18th.
I'd be okay with that, I think.
To give you on Valentine's Day, so you can spend time with your wife?
I'm not so much worried about that, but I think that, that is a big one, and there, there may be other people that want to come to it. So I wouldn't make it on Valentine's Day.
No, I, I concur.
Yeah, so on the other days, fine.
So we're thinking Monday be.
18th.
18th.
Two meetings in a row?
Yeah.
What's that?
A meeting, two meetings in a row?
That's gonna hurt.
Hurt less than Valentine's Day.
I don't know if we want to talk about discipline on Valentine's Day.
No, maybe the Wednesday?
You do the 13th. I was thinking Wednesday, possibly, yeah.
Tuesday or Wednesday the week before.
Play with Wednesday. No, not, go with Wednesday. Wednesday's no work for me.
Tuesday, the 12th?
I'm scoring basketball, so I would just have to get out of that. I can be here, though, I can swing.
Really? Golf already?
Yeah.
You do a lot of training.
How about the, the 11th is Lions meeting?
So we're looking at Tuesday, the 12th, or Monday, the 18th?
Monday, the 18th is a question mark, yeah, I don't know.
Either one's fine, I think.
Can you get out of that, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm out of there.
Does he need to be here? I mean, do you need, do you want to be here?
Well, I won't be here, though.
He'll be on vacation, so you.
Yeah, you're going all week.
I'm gonna be gone the 12th, so if you, if you do it the 18th, you got me.
Okay.
Do you leave the 11th, or you go the whole week?
The 9th.
Oh, you leave the 9th, okay.
You gotta be here, Terry.
So, or do we pick up?
I don't think I need to be.
You don't need to be.
Brian can.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
So the 12th it is?
12th it is.
You'll talk to Megan for me?
I, I feel bad about that, Brian, but well.
No, you're fine.
I know that you enjoy being there at those games, and I know they enjoy having you there.
But our next meeting is January 29th, so is that on everybody's calendar?
It is on my calendar, January 29th, we have a board workshop, two and a half hours.
Is all.
That's February 12th, right? The day of the week is that?
It's the Tuesday.
It's not Wednesday.
Yeah.
And February 12th starts at 6:00. February 12th starts at 6:00, or 6:00.
Correct, 6:00 PM, yes. And we'll try to, I think, as Brian said, I think I, I know of a couple of people I have indicated interest, so we'll have to just notify them. Post it as normal.
I know, they all want to be there for financial planning, don't they?
They all want to be there for financial planning.
They want to come hang out.
That's a biggie.
So we are gonna be covering discipline, Operational Expectation 12, and Governance Policy GP10, Conflict of Interest. And then other board work, Extemec, Excellence Scholarship, Forecast 5, Financial Forecast. Start College Now, second Friday in January count, Achievement Gap Reduction.
Lots going on, yeah.
A lot going on. I do have something else I wanted to review here.
I said that one was the 29th?
Yeah. We have another policy I wanted to cover before we leave here. I'm just gonna turn my eyes on to Brian by saying that.
I'm ready to make this move.
But you did want to do, you wanted to make a revision on the policy that we approved tonight around the administrator.
We do need to, when.
Why don't you and I look at that and then?
We'll look at that. I would like to make sure we have it done by June 15th. But I think we need to identify those policies. We've discussed several of them. Let's look at the board, let's look at the work. I think we've put the comments on, and we'll try to get, when we get the policy committee together. Any other issues, gentlemen, that we would like to talk about this evening? I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight again. I think the best part of the night was, was congratulating the safe weight, bus driver and Rod Winters for saving a young, a young woman's life. And that's just, you know, we have a very dedicated, we have a dedicated staff, dedicated bus drivers, and we need to be very proud of the district that we serve and here today, guys. So with that in mind, thank you, and I'd like to.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.